Good evening. This hearing of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will now come to order. The time is 6:05 PM. It's Wednesday, August 3rd, and it's great to see so many folks in Glendale out to talk to us tonight. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, I just want to thank everyone for taking time on a Wednesday evening to leave your homes and come talk to us about what's important to you in the redistricting process. It's delightful to see this many folks here. In order to comply with federal law, there's a Spanish translator here at the meeting to help translate questions and comments into English. And tonight, it is Carlos Reyes. Is he in the room? Oh, great. Carlos, would you like to come up to the podium and just say a few words of introduction?
My name is Carlos Reyes, and I'm going to be the interpreter today. Buenas tardes, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. According to the Law of the Electoral Rights, a translator and interpreter will be available at all public hearings, in order to provide the translation and interpretation that may be necessary for citizens who need services of translation and interpretation. Please communicate with me so that I can help. Is there anyone in the room who needs an interpreter? If there is, please raise your hand.
I believe we're good, commissioners. Thank you, Carlos. So just to continue the introductions, I'm Chairman Mathis. To my left is Vice Chair Scott Freeman, and my right is Vice Chair Jose Herrera. There are two other commissioners who are based in Pima County, and I'm sure they're watching online if they're back home yet. We just had a meeting here today in Phoenix, so they're probably on the road, so I hope they're not watching if they're on the road, but otherwise, they'd be definitely tuned in. Just to introduce other folks up here, we've got Mary O'Grady, who's our legal counsel tonight, our mapping consultant. We have Ken Strazma and Corinne Kubina-Belak.
You got it right.
And we have also staff in the room. I believe Christina Gomez is here in the back, deputy executive director. And we have a public information officer, Stu Robinson. I'm not sure if he's here tonight. Any outreach coordinators tonight? Is that Lisa Schnelling? Great. Lisa's here to help. And please feel free to ask our staff any questions should you need any assistance tonight. There are request-to-speak forms in the back. You should have seen them on your way in. They are the yellow sheets, and if you'd like to address the commission this evening, please fill one out and turn that in to Christina, and she'll bring that up to us, and we'll make sure that you will be part of the public record tonight. Yes. Oh, and I'm being told that Buck Forst is here. He is our chief technology officer. I just don't see him at the moment.
Back in that corner.
Oh, there he is. Yep, great. Thanks, Buck. And we also have Marty Herter, who is our court reporter tonight, so that he'll be taking all this in, so be sure when you come up to the microphone to state your name and spell it, and say who you're representing, and also what county. If it's yourself, just if you could tell us where you reside, either city, county, or town, that would be very helpful, and then that all gets into the record. Okay, and I've told you about the request-to-speak forms. There are also some blue forms in the back that if you don't want to go on public record tonight and address the commission formally, you can still fill out a blue form, and that information will also come to us. You just wouldn't be recorded tonight, but the information would get recorded that you put on that blue sheet. So if you choose not to address us at the podium, that's another way to supply your input. I want to make sure I've covered everything. Okay, I think we're ready to roll. I wanted to -- oh, I did want to mention, I guess we have a few distinguished guests tonight, and maybe they could stand and wave or be acknowledged. State Representative Anna Tovar from District 13. Great. And Mayor Thomas Shoef from Litchfield Park. And State Senator Rick Murphy. A few council members tonight. I assume these are from Glendale. If I'm mistaken, you can correct me. Manny Martinez from the Choya District. Clark from Yucca District. Norma Alvarez from Ocatillo District. Okay, and I think that's it. Oh, there are others? Those are the ones I have listed, so.
Representative Richard Miranda, District 13, Congressman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Richard Miranda, District 13. We have Michael LeValle, mayor from the town of Youngtown. And I think that's it. I'm sorry about all those. That's great. I'm so glad everybody's here and joining us tonight. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation by our mapping consultant about the redistricting process. So Corinne will be giving that for us this evening.
My name is Corinne Kubina-Belak with Strategic Telemetry. I'm happy to be here tonight in Glendale for the first round of public hearings to discuss the Arizona redistricting process. The goal of these meetings is to hear comments from you about the redistricting process, so thank you for taking the time to attend. This is one of 15 in the first round of public hearings. There will be a second round of hearings once a draft map is published. Before I begin the presentation, I just wanted to highlight again the forms. You have the yellow form and the blue form, and they can be found in the back of the room. We have both forms in Spanish as well. And so, on to the presentation. Which -- if I can turn the sky around. Unfortunately, to see the presentation, I'm going to have to face this way. I apologize. I'll try to do this from the side as much as possible. A brief overview tonight of why -- of what I'll speak about. The first topic -- the first thing I'll cover is why do we have a redistricting commission? What is redistricting? What is the difference between redistricting and reapportionment? Why do we have to redistrict? What guidelines need to be followed when drawing new districts? What are the steps in the redistricting process? And how can the public input be submitted to the AIRC? So first, why do we have a redistricting commission? This is the second time in Arizona's districts that they'll be redrawn by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. In 2000, when Arizona voters approved Proposition 106, they created the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission and established the process and criteria for drawing the new district lines. The commission is made up of two Democrats, two Republicans, and an independent chair elected by the other commissioners. The fifth member should not be registered with any party already represented on the commission. The 2011 AIRC members are Scott Freeman, Vice Chair, Republican from Maricopa County; Jose Herrera, Democrat from Maricopa County; Colleen Mathis, Independent from Pima County; Lyndon McNulty, Democrat from Pima County; and Richard Sturts, Republican from Pima County. So the second question, why -- what is redistricting? Redistricting is the process of redrawing congressional and legislative district lines. What is the difference between redistricting and reapportionment? The two terms are often used interchangeably, but technically, there is a difference. Reapportionment is the process of allocating congressional districts among the states based on changes in population. Because of the population growth over the last decade in Arizona, Arizona was allocated an additional congressional district after the 2010 census, so going from eight to nine districts. And then, redistricting is the process of drawing the actual boundaries of those districts. So why do we have to redistrict? I touched on this a little bit, but because Arizona gained a congressional district, new lines will have to be drawn to add the new district. Even if Arizona had not gained a district, the congressional and legislative district line would have to be redrawn to account for changes in population. The concept of one person, one vote dictates that there should be as close to the same number of people per district as possible. So because the rate of population growth is different in different areas, the existing districts will now have different populations. So what guidelines need to be followed when drawing new districts? First, they must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. They must have equal population, so criteria A and B are federally mandated. All plans must satisfy these two criteria. The districts must be compact and contiguous. They must respect communities of interest. They must use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. And finally, create competitive districts where no significant detriment to other goals. So a little about the Arizona redistricting process, and I'll look over here for a minute. I do apologize. First, public hearings just like this are being conducted all across the state to collect input. The goal is to -- obviously, we start with a grid map, so in some states, the previous plans are used as a starting point for the new plans. This is not the case in Arizona. In Arizona, the starting point is the grid map per proposition 106. The commencement of the mapping process for both the congressional and legislative districts shall be the creation of equal population and a grid-like pattern across the state. The initial grid map will likely only meet criteria B and C, meaning it will have equal population and be compact and contiguous. So continuing, then the grid map will need to be adjusted to meet the sixth criteria we discussed previously, the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. So continuing with adjusting the grid map for equal population, so the districts are compact and contiguous, that they respect communities of interest. One of the goals of the AIRC public hearings is definitely to solicit public opinion about communities of interest. We discuss the forms where you can fill out that information. We must use visible geographic features to draw the districts, which means county boundaries, cities and towns, and census tracts. And usually, census geography follows those visible features. And then finally, create competitive districts where no significant detriment to other goals. So finally, the AIRC wants your input. You can fill out a request-to-speak form at a public hearing and provide the commission with your input. Examples of input might include your thoughts on criteria, communities of interest, and anything else about redistricting. You can speak at a public hearing or submit your form -- submit input on a form if you don't choose to speak. It'll be public record. And finally, please visit us at www.aizredistricting.org or call 602-542-5221 with any thoughts. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Corinne. Apologies, I've learned of a few other distinguished guests in the audience, and I wanted to acknowledge them if they could stand and wave. Rick Moreau, President Tonopah Valley Community Council. Mark Harrington, Chairman Graham County Board of Supervisors. And State Representative Jack Harper is also here this evening. Thank you all for being here. We've got a number of request-to-speak forms. Don't know what our total is, but -- okay. We'll tell you what that total is in a little bit. We'd like, again, for you to come up to the podium when your name's called, and I'll try to name the first four or so, so that you can be ready to come to the front and prepare to give your testimony. And you're also welcome to submit any documentation, maps, anything you have for us, or written statement, and give that also to our deputy executive director, Christina Gomez. She'll get that and ensure that it's part of our record. And just a reminder to please speak into the microphone. Give and spell your name for the court reporter, and specify the city or town in which you And I think with that, we'll go ahead and get started. We've got at least 30-some request-to-speak forms, and just in order to move through this as efficiently as possible, if we could ask speakers to limit their time to three to four minutes. And there'll be someone timing, I'm hoping. I don't know if -- because normally Buck does that, but I don't think he's here, so maybe if you can time. And that way, if we're bumping up against that timeline, if you could try to wrap up your comments as expeditiously as possible, that would be helpful.
Should we do it three or three and a half?
Yeah. About, okay, three and a half minutes is what we'll do. And let's start with State Representative Jack Harper, representing retirement communities in LD 4 from Surprise.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Can I hand you a map that kind of summarizes what I'm talking about?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, committee members, guests in the audience. State Representative Jack Harper, J-A-C-K, Harper, H-A-R-P-E-R. I'm here today to make a pitch -- well, let me start out by saying, I believe fully under federal law that the Voting Rights Act would be upheld in federal court as the number-one priority of the redistricting commission, even despite what the Supreme -- State Supreme Court might have interpreted of the priority of the goals of the independent redistricting commission. After the Voting Rights Act is a priority, I'd like to make a pitch for communities of interest to be respected as much as possible, especially in the Northwest Valley. I would like to keep retirement communities together. Under reapportionment, the legislative district that I represent would have to lose, I don't know, somewhere around 100,000 people. I forgot the total. So assuming that the districts would stay close to what they look like now, but be reapportioned, and then a priority being keeping communities of interest together, I would hope that the amount that people that I would lose would be in the working communities rather than retirement communities, so they could stay together. So specifically, I'm talking about Northeast -- Northwest Phoenix, North Glendale, and North Peoria being split off from Legislative District 4, so that the retirement communities can be kept together. If for some reason, the commission decided to also put Sun City in with Sun City West, Sun City Grand, Sun City Festival, and all the retirement communities in Wickenburg and North Surprise, then probably also split off the two-thirds that you have by county that's also in that district. So I'm trying to make the pitch first to respect the Voting Rights Act, and then as a next priority, communities of interest, and I appreciate having the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll do as I promised, which was to read off a few names, so you could all be ready. Rick Moreau, Mark Harrington, and Michael LeValle are the next three speakers. So if Rick Moreau's ready, President Tonopah Valley Community Council from Tonopah. Thanks. Tonopah.
Yeah, Tonopah. That's right.
Thanks for that. Apologies.
My name is Rick Moreau, last name spelled M-O-R-E-A-U, and I am the president of the Tonopah Valley Community Council. Tonopah is located in the far west valley, in an unincorporated part of Maricopa County. As such, as an unincorporated area, we do have a community spirit. We have what's considered a community out there of people, about 5,000 residents. Currently, the legislative districts split us right down the middle, so we are about 5,000 people, but both of us -- but we're in two different districts, which is really not fair. So we're advocating to have those boundaries moved in a manner that will keep us whole. Currently, what we consider our boundaries are west of Hacienda River, north of Elliott Road, east of 459th Avenue, and south of the Belmont Mountains. So if you can see it, to keep us in one district, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mark Harrington, Chairman Graham County Board of Supervisors, representing Graham County ECO, E-E-C-O. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight, long distance from where I live, and have the opportunity to address you on these very important issues. I want to talk about communities of interest, and how important that is to southeast Arizona and specifically to LD 5. And I worked hard 10 years ago to be able to accomplish what we have today in LD 5, and with the addition of Verde Valley for numbers' sake, I believe that we can continue with LD 5 the way it's now constituted pretty much, and will serve these communities of The communities of interest mainly that we have in common by ECO, that's the Eastern Counties Organization, of which I'm president, and the other is the Environmental Economic Communities Organization, which I am the president. These constitute five counties: Greenlee, Graham, Apache, Navajo, and Gila County, which is all contained now within LD 5. But these communities of interest include mining, which are Gila County, Greenlee County, and Graham County today. And the other communities of interest that we have in common with all of these are agriculture, of course, which is very important to us in southeast Arizona, farming, ranching, and the greenhouse industry, which is a major economic engine that exists for us. We have other communities of interest, our family, cultural, and historic communities, Pioneer Ancestry, cultural ties are important to our citizens, and all of these things make very successful what we now have. These things date back before statehood, so they have existed among us there for a long time. But during the past decade, the Graham County citizens and the other citizens of these counties have had their voice clearly heard, and what we'd ask you to do is, please don't take away from us in the realignment process, these things that are so important to us, and help us to be able to stay in a contiguous way, and to be able to represent these communities of interest. I also am here to speak for support of the Penala County Government Alliance Congressional Map, and I have a new copy of that. There is a change since it was shown to you, and I will leave it here at the desk on my way out. The other thing I would ask is that you consider having a meeting in southeast Arizona. Graham, Greenlee, and Gila Counties effectively were left out of the decision when the decision was made for meetings. We'd like to have our people have an opportunity to share these same things with you as a commission. Again, I deeply appreciate you hearing me out tonight, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And if you don't mind just spelling your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Mark, M-A-R-K, Harrington, H-E-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael LeValle, followed by Richard Miranda and Mary Alvarado. So if Michael's ready, Mr. LeValle, mayor of town of Youngtown, representing Youngtown.
Yes, my name is Michael LeValle. It's M-I-C-H-A-E-L-L-E, capital V, A-U-L-T. I am the mayor of Youngtown, and thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission for this opportunity to address you tonight. I have a letter I'd like to read into the record. Do you want a copy, or shall I leave it in the back of the room? Would you like it now?
We can -- yeah, we'll keep a copy here, and then you can read that into the record. Thank you.
Okay, this letter is dated August 2nd, 2011, addressed to the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. To whom it may concern, the mayor and town council of Youngtown unanimously asked that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission consider the town of Youngtown to be a community of interest, or COI, for purposes of redistricting legislative and congressional districts. As a COI, Youngtown should be kept intact with the entire town being placed in the same district. Youngtown was the country's first retirement community, inceptioned in 1954. However, since the town lost its age overlay in 1998, its demographics have changed profoundly. Current consensus -- I'm sorry, current census statistics show the retirement population in Youngtown to be around 20% of the total population. Consequently, Youngtown has much in common with its neighboring communities to the west, El Mirage and Surprise. We ask that you consider placing us in a district with which we are demographically compatible. Sincerely -- and then that letter is signed by me as mayor, and then by all six of my council members.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Miranda from Arizona Minority Coalition, representing District 13.
Thank you. I'm going to try and use this -- I'm not quite sure how to close this screen, but Richard Miranda, R-I-C-H-A-R-D, Miranda, M-I-R-A-N-D-A. I live in Phoenix, but I have a Tolleson zip code address, so go figure. I'm not sure how to do this. Escape? Oh, there we go. I'm trying to get to down here at the bottom. Right, right there? Oh, go ahead. You get the first map on there. There's a lot of information I want to go through. I know that the coalition presented the map in South Mountain High School, I mean, Community College, but very briefly, the green is traditionally what's known as South Phoenix, which includes South Phoenix and the area of Levine. It includes Roosevelt School District, Levine School District, and also the town of Guadalupe. The entire city council of Guadalupe has approved this map, along with other members and school board members from that area. Moving on very quickly. Moving on very quickly, the yellow district incorporates several traditionally large Hispanic communities, all the way from the, the west side, which includes Las Ligas, Cassin, Old Avondale, the city of Tolleson. By the way, the entire city council of Tolleson has approved this map along with the mayor of Avondale, and several school board members ranging all the way from the Isaac School District, which I know they have an issue with a little section that needs to be included, not much population. And then we have Fowler School District, and then we have Tolleson Elementary, Tolleson High School. We have the old community of Santa Maria. I was a Phoenix native here, I'm talking about communities that have been here in, in this area since there was, it was agricultural. It has a rich tradition, and so we're, we're asking that these community interests, and by the way, do, do these maps meet the, the first five requirements? Absolutely. Communities' interests, geographic boundaries, Voting Rights Act, population, it mirrors almost close to what the population size is. Where did I hit? If I could get some help? Okay, the, the next two are the purple district, which we're going to have people here also speak, which incorporates communities' interests of Old Glendale, the old Pendergast School District, which used to be in the rural area when I was growing up, it was way out there off of 91st Avenue. It includes Cartwright School District, includes Phoenix Elementary, parts of Phoenix Elementary. These are all predominantly Latino communities, reaching into the 70% population. It is where we live, it's where we shop, it is where we, as a community, identifies ourselves. These are all typically old neighborhoods, and, and therefore belong together. And the population requirements are absolutely met, the Voting Rights Act are absolutely met. The, the thing that I want to point out is also, the orange district is a largely Latino-based population that reaches 53%. I know the maps in the past were not consistent in trying to represent Latino communities, and, in my opinion, were generally mandated. And so if you'll notice, there's no, there's no etching here for anybody in particular, we just, they're very straight lines, they're, they're trying to, we're just trying to meet the requirements that are needed to keep, in my opinion, communities' interests together. We also have school districts almost entirely within the boundaries that I've, that I've shown. We have support from throughout, I'm not sure how much time we have.
We don't have any. But you can, so if you could wrap up, that would be great. We're over the 3:30.
You know, we have been open with this process, we have, we have shown our maps to other, other groups. We haven't really gotten that kind of discussion with other groups. We have not seen any maps in, in particular, even though they're being drawn, but we are open to changes to our map, but we are not open to the fact of dividing communities of interest here. So, but we're all open to, to some changes to this, and keep open and honest dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Alvarado, governing board member for LULAC from Maricopa.
Hello, my name is Mari Alvarado, that's M-A-R-I. Alvarado is A-L-V-A-R-A-D-O, representing the Arizona Minority Coalition. I'm also a member of the governing board of the Alhambra School District. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, and I'm a member of LULAC. I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and chambers of the Independent Redistricting Commission. I know that the task before you is very daunting, and I appreciate the time that you have to listen to us in the community. I want to tell you that I strongly support the legislative redistricting maps that are proposed by the Arizona Minority Coalition, and that were explained by Representative Richard Miranda. Great thought, effort, and time have been put into forming these maps with several meetings that I have attended, and that other local and state leadership, together with many citizens, have put this, these maps together. These maps unite communities of interest, and also these maps provide the best opportunity for minority representation in the Arizona Legislature. So, in ending, I urge the IRC to adopt these proposed maps in your final redistricting decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three or four speakers, Jackie Rose, Rick Murphy, John Marele, and Evelyn Shapiro. So if we could have Jackie Rose, Committee Chair, District Nine, representing self from Sun City.
Okay, I'm Jackie Rose Jackone, J-A-C-Q-U-E-L-I-N-E, middle initial D, Rose, R-O-S-E. I'd like to thank the Commission for meeting here in the west valley in Glendale, and giving us in District Nine and the other west valley districts, an opportunity to express our gratitude to you for following the will of the voters, and carrying out your constitutionally mandated prerogatives. We support you and your goals to create fair and competitive districts, and we want you to know that. I think it's very important to maintain competitiveness in each district to more closely represent the one-third, one-third, one-third voter registration. No one party should dominate the state. That does not represent the voters. It is important that you listen to the people of Arizona, rather than special interest groups or organizations which are promoting the interests of elected officials, rather than the citizens of the state. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is State Senator Rick Murphy from Peoria.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Rick Murphy, R-I-C-K-M-U-R-P-H-Y. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think it would be really important when it comes to the mid-northwest valley, as I call the area of town I live in, that the communities of interest is a very important feature to keep in mind, and the current district did a pretty good job of that, in the sense of, we have Sun City as roughly about half of the voting population of the district, and it is contiguous, and it is all of the original Sun City, and that is what the residents want in Sun City. They want to all be in one district, as was expressed during the last round of redistricting, and of the constituents that I've spoken to. They, they prefer to be in one district so that they feel like they have a voice. Equally important are the Glendale and Peoria areas of the district, which, again, are about half of the voting population of the district, and I think that balance is relatively important, because what you don't want to have is only a segment of Sun City that is then dominated by the other family areas, or a small family area dominated by retirement areas, and then one of those areas might lose the voice. The way we have it now, it's relatively well-balanced, and both areas that are somewhat different, but contiguous, feel like they both have a voice, and they're both listened to, and they're not dominated by the other. So I think that balance is very important, and I think it would be important to continue that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Marele, followed by Evelyn Shapiro, Catherine French, and Dulce Gonzalez. So, if John, oh, great, thank you. And he can tell me how he pronounces his name.
Hello, my name is John Mareles, Mareles. I'm State Director for Arizona League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm the State Director for the Arizona League of United Latin American Citizens. I just want to express my support for the map that was proposed by the Arizona Minority Council, the map that was described by, you know, State Representative Richard Miranda. I think that map is very compliant with the, the civil rights laws, it's also compliant with the Voting Rights Act, I think it's compliant also with, I mean, reflect the communities of interest, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is Evelyn Shapiro, from Isaac School District Number Five, governing board member, representing herself from Phoenix.
Thank you, my name is Evelyn Shapiro, E-V-E-L-Y-N, capital S-H-A, P-Like and Paul, I-R-O. And I'm with the Isaac School Board, and I have been since 2001, when you all decided to have redistricting once before. And during that time before, we were broken up into four districts, and that made it very difficult, because to ask a House of Representative or a Senator to do something, we were only 6.8 square miles, and they had one little bit of this, or they had one little bit of that, and so we never got any attention. And you all listened real well, last time that I came fighting for us to be in one district, whether it's 13 or in 14, but keep us all together. And you've got us all together right now, except for north of 39th Avenue, L and Thomas. West of 39th Avenue, east of 43rd Avenue, to Indian School, that segment is left out of your yellow design that you've got there for the map. To the canal is a proper domain where we have homes. After the canal, it's all commercial, and that, so there's, on there, but if you could just keep us until the canal, then we would all be together and working. And Mr. Miranda, or Senator Miranda, was there for us, and he worked with us and helped us out so much at that time. I would ask you please to consider it, and bring it back, and keep us back as one district. Like I said, we're only 6.8 square miles. If you could help us out, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine French, President Aguafria Ranch, HOA, in Youngtown.
Hello, Madam Chairman and Commission Members. My name is Dr. Catherine French, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, middle initial J, French like in french fries, to make that part easy. I come today to speak to you about allowing the Town of Youngtown to be aligned more with a community that has interests that are similar to it. We do not align well at all with the Sun City areas. The only thing we have in common is 111th Avenue, and there is quite a widespread on that avenue, if you've been on it. We are a small town, but we have changed a great deal, and I speak to you representing nearly half the community. Our HOA is a relatively new area that came into being in around 2004, 2005, 783 homes, and those homes are all made up of young families. And those families are not represented well in the district that we are currently in, because it is overshadowed by the large number of retirees who are in our district in the Sun City area. And so, most of the time, we are not listened to, we are not seen, and often not even asked what our opinion is, let alone would we be interested in a change. And anytime there is anything that is related to growth, related to our area, it cannot be seen or heard because of that. So we would really encourage you, with community of interest being the topic that I'm speaking to, that you align us more with an area like an El Mirage or a Surprise, as the, the mayor also spoke of, because that is something that would make us more similar. When you have six and seven and eight-year-olds running around, and Sun City has no interest in that, they raised all their kids, is a lot of how we hear them speak, then you're in a position where it's hard to put forward those issues and have them listened to, and held up in a way that's meaningful. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dulce Gonzalez, and after Dulce will be Carolyn Modine, Rivco Knox, and Reed Roger. So Dulce Gonzalez, a student in law at South Glendale Community, from Glendale.
Well, actually, I'm a student at ASU, but I live in South Glendale.
Oh, okay.
And I'm here as a resident of South Glendale, as a member of LD13, and as a voter in Congressional District Four, and as a law student. The majority of my time I spent in South Phoenix, and then for the past 11 years, I've lived in South Glendale, and I've seen more and more how those communities have so much in common. They're very similar, South Glendale often feels like it's more a part of Phoenix, because in the neighborhood that I live in, my brother still attends Alhambra School District, which is a part of the Phoenix Union High School District. My sisters go to Phoenix College, we go to church in Phoenix, our jobs are in Phoenix. And so I feel that the way that all of the, I mean, I'm happy to be a part of Glendale, Glendale has been good to us, to fulfill our municipal needs. At the legislative level, I feel that we've been represented well within our community, given our needs, our socioeconomic needs, our cultural needs. At a congressional level, I don't think that our boundaries or district, sorry, our neighborhood could fit in any other congressional district, because I feel that the kind of issues that we bring up to a congressional level would not be fulfilled if they're taken by a congressional district that's in north Phoenix or northwest Glendale. Just our issues are not the same. Our issues are education, transportation, social services, and again, our, our socioeconomic needs and our cultural, cultural backgrounds are very similar with south Phoenix, with Guadalupe, with central Phoenix, and like Avondale and whatnot. And I feel that as it currently stands, we are, we have a voice in each of those levels, and I would appreciate it to keep it that way. Thank you.
Would you mind spelling your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dulce, D-U-L-C-E, Gonzalez, G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Modine, representing self from Maricopa Sun City.
C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Modine, M-O-D-E-E-N. Thank you to the Commission for the work you're doing, including public input, to establish fair and honest voting districts for Arizona. These districts should represent the distribution of party as declared by Arizona voting residents, one-third Republican, one-third Democratic, one-third Independent. You are also aware of community cohesiveness, so that boundaries include communities of people that operate as a unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rivco Knox, representing self from Phoenix.
Thank you, members of the Commission. My name is R-I-V, like in victory, K-O, first name, I have no middle name, last name is Knox, K-N-O-X. I live in Phoenix, actually, I've lived in the same house since 1966. I've also lived in somewhere between four and five different legislative districts, I'd say. I don't know if you can see my shirt, it does show that I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not representing them, but as a member of the League, we have spent a lot of, we've learned a lot about the redistricting process, and are very concerned to make sure that it's well-done, and I thank you all for holding these public hearings. My main point that I really want to push here is the whole idea of competitiveness. What we have seen so often in this state, and obviously around the country in many ways, is the lack of competition. And what that, when that happens, you wind up with a very, when you wind up with, when you have a preponderance of either Republicans or Democrats in so many current districts, they are safe for that party, and much more extreme and ideological candidates are likely to be elected. People more and more need and want candidates that must appeal to all sectors of the population, which is why it is so important that districts be competitive. I'd like to make a final, very quick comment, which is that, as you, I'm sure, are all aware, there is a non-legislative entity, or non-public entity called the Arizona Competitive Coalition, and they have sponsored a contest to create maps, and they have a Republican and a Democrat co-chairing their competitive coalition, and they have opened it up to the public for maps, and I would certainly hope that you will pay attention to the maps that are being created by, quote, "the public," because they are not responding to any, quote, "special interests." It's just whoever wants to, goes in and uses their mapping system, and is certainly aware of the characteristics of the, the requirements criteria. I do want to make one final, I said final, I apologize for that, but I, I think unfortunately, although I support the Voting Rights Act in one way, I think its interpretation has many times been skewed. The idea is not to discriminate against minorities, it is not to put them all in one district, and frequently, members of minority groups tend to be of one party, and you wind up with one very heavily, one district very heavily of one party, and then there's no representation in the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Reed Roger. Janet Balden, Shirley McAllister, and Nelson Fink.
My name's Reed Roger, R-E-I-D, R-O-D-G-E-R. I'm the, R-E-I-D, R-O-D-G-E-R. You got that? Okay. I'm the chairman of the Agricultural Nursery and Greenhouse Committee for State of Arizona Farm Bureau, and I'm here representing myself tonight, and I'm in District Four up in Glendale. And I'd like to thank each one of you for the efforts putting in public input for issues that are critically important in our state. And the Commission here, you're trying to squeeze what, yet another congressman on the state, and I think it's, what, 30 legislative districts now? That's a daunting task, and I think it's got to be better you than me that tries to do all of that. But it's very important that each of our citizens are correctly represented. And the community of interest that I have tonight, that I'd like to talk to you about, is all of our rural districts, not just in Maricopa County here, or my district, but throughout the state. As a small business owner, that's been, over the last few years, encroached by urbanization. And I have to say that the rural voice has been removed due to the sheer mass of the urban voice. I believe that each citizen chooses and has close to the same hopes, desires, dreams as any other citizen, but the legislative needs are very much so different. If rural areas are merged with urban areas for whatever reasons, that rural voice inevitably gets drowned out. Maricopa County, which I believe has the largest amount of voters in the entire state, and whatever the citizens might vote or voice from the legislation, the citizens get heard. As an example, if a rural community like WikiUp were incorporated into urban Maricopa County, that rural voice might not receive the attention that's needed. The urban voice here might make demands or have needs of mass transit, public rail. WikiUp, on the other hand, might just need indoor plumbing, you know? Merging a mass of rural land to add population to a mainly urban district, that rural voice will get lost. So, let's not drown out that urban voice. Rural communities share much in common with each other, no matter how far apart. That rural voice can be drowned out by urban population that might be closer in proximity, but not on ideology or the needs and demands of the rural community. Tonight, I've heard pretty much so a lot that represents that. You've been invited to go to Graham County. I know those greenhouses down there. Those people have serious issues, legislative issues, that are devastating to that industry. Take them up on their invitation. Go down and listen to people in Graham County. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, oh, sorry, time. Before we continue, we're going to take five minutes, just a short recess. And the time right now is 6:58 PM. Get started.
Is it on?
Back into public session at 7:10 PM. And our next speaker, and apologies for the brief break, but Janet Balden, Shirley McAllister, Nelson Fink are next. Janet's representing LD Nine from Sun City.
For myself, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, and I thank you, Madam Chair, and the board for allowing me to speak tonight and give my concerns about the changes that might come about in LD Nine. My name is Janet Balden, J-A-N-E-T, and the last name is B. as in boy, A-L-D as in David, O-N. I currently reside in Sun City in the Miramosa Precinct, or Mimosa, I guess is the way it's pronounced, and that's in LD Nine. For those of you that don't know, Sun City is, LD Nine has Sun City, parts of Peoria, part of Glendale, and Youngtown. Sun City is a community of interest to me because I moved there recently to take care of my aging mother. My community, all around me, my neighbors, and the people that I know that live in Sun City, all shop and go to the doctors and get their entertainment and their restaurants from Peoria and Glendale. And so, it makes sense to me that economically, those communities should continue together. Westbrook is also currently in LD Four, and because of a lack of numbers in population, LD Nine needs to grow. And because Westbrook borders Sun City, and both areas have similar interests, it seems like it would be a good way to help LD Four lose some of the population that they need to reduce themselves by. The current boundaries are north to Union Hills, south to Northern Avenue, west to the Aguafria Ranch, and east to 51st. The proposed boundaries, or the boundaries that I'm proposing tonight, are to move it farther north to Beardsley because 101 is right there, and that's a good natural boundary. To keep the boundary east to 51st, because that is a natural boundary, it separates Glendale from Phoenix. And it would also keep the Peoria Unified School District in only two legislative districts. And the southern boundary would dip just below Northern Avenue, and then west to the natural boundary, which is the Aguafria River. The reasons for these changes, well, as I said before, LD Nine only has 34,000, it needs to increase their population by 34,000, and LD Four needs to decrease by 81,000. Adding Westbrook would reduce LD Four, and Peoria would remain in just two districts. Sun City and South Peoria, I feel, should be kept together because the residents primarily go to Peoria, like I said, for shopping and medical facilities. I've heard talk that, and I don't know if it's true or not, but there was some discussion about trying to combine the residents of Sun City and Sun City West into one district. And I want to address that because I feel that that would not be beneficial to either group. Because we both have different utilities, different fire districts, and what might be beneficial to one community would not necessarily be beneficial to the other. The two communities also have completely and separate HOAs that govern them, and what is okay in Sun City might not be okay in Sun City West. Most of Sun City's activities take place outside in Peoria or Glendale, while at Sun City West, most of them go to some surprise. And my last point, Sun City West's Recreation Board is under Title 33, while Sun Cities is under Title 10, and these differences might make some major problems if they're placed in the same district. I thank you again for allowing me the time to speak, and I do have a copy of my map here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. McAllister, representing- McAllister, representing self from Maricopa, she's already here.
Hi, I'm Shirley McAllister, it's spelled S.H.I.R.L.E.Y.M.C.A.L.L.I.S.T.E.R. Thank you for serving on this important commission. I recognize your task is a difficult one. In fact, you'll not be able to please all of us in coming up with your recommendations for new district lines. Your commitment for serving our state is commendable. I've been a resident and voter in Arizona for 15 years, voting in every election since 1996. When I voted in my first primary election, I understood why so few people did not vote, why so many people did not vote. We had very few choices on the Democratic primary ballot. In many of our districts, voters have little or no choice even during the general election. That is because we have so few competitive districts. I know there are many considerations to be made before the new district lines are drawn. Please keep in mind that with voter registration being closely divided among Republicans, Democrats, and independents, it would make sense that there be more competitive districts available for the next 10 years than have been available in the past. Without competitive districts, many of us have no representation. Those elected do not respond to our calls, emails, or letters. Without competition, we have lost our voice. So I ask that you give serious consideration to forming competitive districts, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nelson Fink, and he will be followed by Garrett Simpson, Steve Gallardo, and John Keck. So Nelson Fink, representing self, and you'll have to tell us where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Nelson Fink, N.E.L.S.O.N.F.I.N.K. I elected to come this evening to provide input for the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, and in turn, my copy of the public input form. My wife and I do the majority of our shopping, entertainment, belonging to our church, as well as being members of local organizations within the current boundaries of LD9. However, LD9 needs to gain approximately 34,500 people, while LD4 needs to reduce by approximately 81,172. Therefore, Westbrook, which is currently in LD4, should be added to LD9, still keeping Peoria in just two districts. This action recommended, I feel, because Westbrook borders Sun City, and they have similar interests, such as both being retirement communities and sharing the same shopping amenities. That would also add to our 34,500 people that we need to increase. Most persons living in Glendale, Peoria, and Sun City utilize the same shopping, churches, and entertainment within the above boundaries that I'm about to mention. I think the boundary should be Beardsley and 101 Freeway. That would be the northern boundary. The eastern boundary, 51st Avenue. The western boundary as the Aqua Freya River. And the southern boundary, Northern Avenue. The 51st Avenue is a natural breaking point between Phoenix and Glendale. The Aqua Freya would be a natural breaking point between Sun City and Sun City West. I've heard and seen some legislation that was causing some problems in our last legislative session. And I think the lady before me has covered it pretty well, but I'd like to reiterate it because I think it's important you folks understand that you just can't take two retirement communities or two communities that have been working together for 10 years and decide now you're going to change them. And that is, you'll have problems by putting Sun City and Sun City West together because of a Title 33 for the recreation centers in Sun City West, while Sun City is only using Title 10 for their recreation centers. These differences can cause an awful lot of problems. Again, you have separate fire departments for these folks. You have separate homeowners associations. And if any of you are familiar with the homeowners association, they make their own laws whenever they want to. And these people have been living 10 years under these current laws that they've made for each one of these communities. Thank you for your attention. The work you do is critical to the future of Arizona. I trust you will do it impartially and in the best entrance of our great state. Thank you. I've turned this form in back to.
Wonderful, thank you. Our next speaker is Garrett Simpson, representing self from Maricopa.
From Glendale, actually.
Okay.
Ms. Mathis, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, thank you for having us here. And I'm delighted to be here to share in this open process. This is the sort of thing that usually takes place in back rooms and smoke-filled rooms in the political cliche. The Arizona that I grew up in was rather like that. Before Baker versus Carr, back when the rural communities were running everything in Arizona, maybe you can remember, if you've lived here as long as I have, that the interstate highways were built from Yuma and the state lines where the agriculture communities were to Phoenix. And traffic in Phoenix and in Maricopa County was messed up for years as they slowly, slowly approached the city with freeways. And you can still go and see the Heraldus Parkway in Yuma that was built, overbuilt, for a community that really didn't need it, because that's where the power was. That's where the power was before one man, one vote. And the reason I wanted to take your time was because the demographer's PowerPoint presentation talked about the concept of one person, one vote. It's not a concept, it's a constitutional mandate. Baker versus Carr is the law, it's a matter of equal protection of law, and I know you know that, but I think it needs to be underlined because a lot of the fine people behind me who came up to speak were talking about things that are discretionary. Communities of interest, an important consideration, discretionary. Keeping fire districts in the same legislative district, not a bad idea, but it's discretionary, and it's subordinate to the need to make sure that the votes of human beings that are citizens of the United States don't get diluted, don't get diminished by political considerations that even while meritorious, don't rise to the level of a constitutional mandate. The competitiveness that Ms. McAllister talked about is crucial because that goes to the essence of the Voting Rights Act and the essence of equal protection. The one-third, one-third, one-third is a natural place to do it, I agree with Ms. McAllister completely. And I just think it's important that as we go through this process, and again, I'm delighted to see it happening in the daylight, in the sunshine, the things that really matter, the things that are requisite, have to come first. The things that are dispositive are not suppressing the vote and making sure that people have access to the ballot, and that their votes count as much as the votes in the next district, in the next congressional district, as well as the next legislative district. And I think that's the essence of your commission and in your duties, and I commend you for your service and hope that you'll take that to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is State Senator Steve Gallardo, Cartwright Governing Board Member as well, representing self.
Good afternoon, thank you, members of the commission. Real quickly, just for the record, State Senator Steve Gallardo from District 13, and also serving on the Cartwright Elementary School Board. I come here in support of the Minority Coalition map that has been presented by Representative Richard Miranda. It is a map that we have worked on refusefully for quite some time now. And when we first started looking at the area, one of the things that we know that not only the Department of Justice is going to be looking at, but also you all as commissioners, in that what are the communities of commonality, what are those communities of interest? And so we took a step back and we looked at those areas, and we took in a lot of different considerations, from property values, school districts, household income, language, graduation rates. We looked at all those different types of category, and we were able to kind of draw an outline of what we would call communities of interest, communities of commonality. From that outline, we divided up what we hope to have four legislative districts. Those legislative districts have been presented to you all. We did our best to try to keep them as compact as possible, at the same time, look at population. Of course, we have to make sure that they're equal in terms of population to the extent practical. So we looked at all those factors when drawing these minority districts. They're not perfect, and even just standing out right there near the door, I got earful by some folks that had some suggestions, and we are definitely open to some suggestions on how we can make these districts fair and be able to represent those communities. Just even this evening, it's interesting. I'll add another community of interest, by the way. Currently, right now, I'm working with a project with Ranch Market, Wells Fargo, some other corporations to give out back-to-school backpacks to kids. These kids are predominantly low-income kids that go to some of our public schools in those areas. And we identified certain areas, and come and behold, those areas are within the boundaries in which we are now looking at. We did our first giveaway this evening of 600. We'll give out another 600 backpacks tomorrow and throughout the weekend, 4,000 backpacks altogether. But nonetheless, it is encompass of those geographical boundaries, those four districts. Those are the areas in which we gave out backpacks or two. So when we looked at these maps, we looked at it based on communities of commonality, communities of interest, what are those? And we drew those districts based on that. And also, when it comes to congressional lines, we have yet to sit down and even start focusing on congressional lines. I know there's other folks that are working on the congressional lines, but here's a perfect example of what a congressional district could look like in Maricopa County in terms of communities of commonality. If you look at that, I'm not too sure, in terms of the total number of people there, but here's a perfect ideal district in which a congressional district can be drawn from. So with that, I would hope that you take in consideration Minority Coalition map. I know we're shopping around to more folks, school board members, community leaders, anyone that is willing to sit down and talk and look at it, we are open. And as we continue to shop it around, I would plan that we would have additional feedback that we will be able to present to the commission. But at this point, I am totally supportive of the Minority Coalition map and hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Speaker is John Martin Keck, and I'm going to read off the next three names, Bill Cheatham, Greg Hines, and Steve Schellenberger. Oh, great. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Martin Keck, that's J.O.H.N.M.A.R.T.I.N.K.E.C.K. I do not represent any group, although I am a member of one of the major political parties. I will paraphrase a quote from a former United States Senator. "There are too many Democrats in the Arizona Legislature. There are too many Republicans in the Arizona Legislature, and not near enough Arizonans in the Arizona Legislature." Gerrymandering is a practice to which I object, and if you look at the present map, you will see many examples of it. The prime examples appear in Districts 13, 14, and 15. There is no way that a district can be extended over that much urban geographical territory and say that it represents either a community of interest, nor is it competitive political district. I will say that two of these three, as if any ethnic group votes as a block. It is my personal belief the compactness of the district and a community of interest should be of paramount for your consideration for redistricting. With the rise of the independent voters, you may find some new districts in which neither the Democrats nor the Republicans are in a plurality. In the past 30 years, I have lived in three different legislative districts and three different county supervisory districts. I haven't moved. From this experience, I will say that I believe I can be fairly represented in the legislature by persons who are a different political party than I am and of a different ethnic group than I am. It all depends on the personality of the representative. Registered voters are American citizens, and I am a great believer in the one person, one vote. Being American by birth or naturalization is the common bond we all have. Please do not take your guidelines on redistricting from the Seven Dwarfs and their followers in Washington, DC. It is necessary to discuss, consider, and compromise to reach the best decisions. If anyone is 100% happy with your final outcome, you will know there's something wrong with it. I suggest you proceed with a fundamental fairness to all people who are involved. I realize the United States Justice Department is the large pile of fecal material you must shovel through on your way to successful redistricting. They have believed for over 50 years that the citizens of Arizona are not intelligent enough to conduct our own business. You are engaged in a great task. Have patience and endurance, and may you be guided by a power that does not reside on this earth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, ready, Bill Cheatham, representing self from Phoenix.
Chairperson Mathis and the other members of the commission, thank you for letting me speak. In reviewing the provisions that you are to follow in this important process, I'm most interested in the community of interest goal. I'm a resident of Phoenix with a Paradise Valley address. It actually starts right across the street from me. I lived in Scottsdale for 10 years before moving to my current residence. I have found myself spending almost all of my time in Phoenix since the move seven years ago. I work out of my home, and my wife works in Phoenix, and my children work in Phoenix. I have found that a move of only two miles has changed my work, recreation, and shopping patterns to Phoenix and Paradise Valley. The exception is my cleaners, and you can't give up good cleaners no matter where they are. We are active in many organizations, and almost all are based in Phoenix, including our church and our granddaughter's school. Most of our friends and family live in Phoenix and PV, and I have been far more cognizant of the direction of the issues that affect Phoenix than I had done as a Scottsdale resident. Tatum has replaced Scottsdale Road as my main thoroughfare. In short, the fortunes of Phoenix are most important to me and my family. I believe that the communities of PV and Phoenix are strongly linked and should be in the same congressional district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Hines, representing self from Phoenix.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Greg Hines, G.R.E.G.H.Y.N.E.S. I live in downtown Phoenix in the historic Willow neighborhood. I think that the historic districts in Phoenix, Central Phoenix, should stay together. Historic neighborhoods of Central Phoenix are located between 24th Street and 19th Avenue, East and West, and Bethany Home Road and Van Buren, North and South, with a couple of neighborhoods outside of these boundaries, and a majority of the neighborhoods clustered south of Thomas Road and west of 7th Street. Historic neighborhoods have similar concerns and have a history of successfully working together with issues regarding historic preservation, graffiti, reduction of crime, local traffic concerns, obtaining speed bumps, roundabouts and overhaul, and overall neighborhood improvements. Historic neighborhoods should stay together because they are a community of interest with similar histories, schools, transportation routes, culture, art districts, concerns for historical integrity, festivals, home tours, very active neighborhood associations, voting histories, et cetera. It is a very unique part of Phoenix, unlike areas that are located east of it. In a congressional map, the historic neighborhoods of Central Phoenix should be included with West Phoenix, Maryvale, Isaac Neighborhoods, and South Phoenix. There is a natural connection between downtown Phoenix and South Phoenix, which is Central Avenue, because of similar elementary schools, high school, and community colleges shared by the residents of the areas, as well as frequently... the same communities. People in Central Phoenix utilize the light rail, and there are many active residents in the South Phoenix area that are currently working on connecting light rail from Central Phoenix to South Mountain through Central Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Schallenberger, representing Self from Glendale. And the next three will be Celeste Pettijohn, Jim Larson, and Lisa Gray.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve, S-T-E-V-E, Schallenberger, S-C-H-A-L-L-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. And with that, I think half my time is up.[658.64][658.64][laughter] In all seriousness, though, in the past few months, the American people have been warned to a frazzle by the goings-on back in Washington. Depending on who you talk to, the process has either been fair or it has not. It is fairness, however, that this process is all about. Each new district should be redistricted fairly, with as much as possible, the mix being equal, such that the people of those districts can have a fair chance of being represented by those who understand their views. Any district that is carved out strictly for the benefit of a single group of people is not a fair district. It's not a district that reflects the diversity, the melting pot that is of Arizona and indeed is the United States. Fairness is all we ask. I know that the IRC will do its level best to make that happen. It's in the best interests of the people of Arizona and to the spirit of fairness, which is the true mark of all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.[727.11][727.11][applause] Our next speaker is Celeste Pettijohn, representing Self from Phoenix.
Madam Chairwoman, committee, my name is Celeste, C-E-L-E-S-T-E, Pettijohn, P-E-T-T-I-J-O-H-N. And I am here speaking on behalf of competitiveness. I think it is absolutely critical that competitiveness be taken as one of the major aspects that you look at in drawing these maps. As a former campaign manager and as a district chair, I can tell you, in Legislative District Six, as it currently exists, it is almost impossible to attract good candidates. You cannot get quality candidates to run for a position they feel they have absolutely no hope of achieving. And I would believe the same exists in any of the other legislative districts that are so lopsided. We have also a particular problem with the amount of acreage, for lack of a better word, that we cover. We extend all the way up through Anthem, and we currently now have representatives that basically don't consider the interests of Phoenix. They even refer to themselves as representatives from Anthem, which of course isn't any form of a city at all. And so you can see, it's vitally important that we have competitive districts where both parties can get together and give us people who are worthy to represent us. And I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you.[841.12][841.12][applause] Our next speaker is Jim Larson, representing Self from Phoenix.
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the committee. My name again is Jim Larson, L-A-J-I-M-L-A-R-S-O-N. And I'm representing actually myself, but I also use a candidate for state senator in District Six. And if you looked at the demographics and the size of our LD, it runs all the way from basically Thunderbird South, very urbanized area, all the way up to the Maricopa County border, very rural. My issues at that time and still are, I want to represent, I don't want our people that are here in the legislature, represent all the people that are in the district, so it's very diverse. And unfortunately, I didn't, no matter really who you would get into the councils or into the legislative positions, they're not really geared towards representing rural people with all the issues that are going on in the county, because there's a lot of county districts out there, as well as the urban districts down here, which is really heavily with the crime, fire department, police department, density issues that go on. So when you're making your maps, please, besides looking at the interests of your, the interest of the people that are in the urban areas and in the residential areas, make sure that you're also looking at the competitive side as well, as was also spoken. The people in the rural areas need to have a representative that fairly represents everybody in that district, which means also looking at the competitiveness. The people in the urban areas need to have the same thing. And so basically, that's what I'm looking for, is making sure that the competitiveness in the districts match the members, the special interest groups and stuff. So you can't have one over the other. You need to kind of balance it all out, which I'm sure you're all working on to get that done. But that's just a very highlighted office for that. So with that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.[969.38][969.38][applause] Lisa Gray is our next speaker, representing Self from Sun City LD9. And I'll just read the next three. I believe this says Willard Hansen, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing, Anita Christie, and Walt Gray.
Chairwoman, members of the commission, my name is Lisa Gray, L-I-S-A-G-R-A-Y. I am representing myself, but I am the Republican District Chairman for Legislative District Nine. I want to agree with Representative Rick Murphy that District Nine is a very well-balanced district. We currently have a representative that was elected that lives in Sun City, one that lives in Peoria, and one that lives in Glendale. So I really think that we have a great balance. Just so, I'm going to reiterate some of the talking points or some of the things that were brought up today, that we do have to grow by 34,500 people, while District Four needs to shrink by 81,172. So Westbrook, being just north of Sun City, would be a great addition into our district. It does, like I said, it borders Sun City, it has similar interests. They are both retirement communities, and they shop in the same areas, they have the same shopping amenities. And then also, by adding Westbrook, it would decrease the Legislative District Four. On the west side, the Aguafria River makes a natural boundary between Sun City and Sun City West. And then on the east side, 51st Ave is a good natural boundary line that separates Glendale and Phoenix. It also separates the Peoria School District from the Washington Elementary. So it would be really nice to try to keep PUSD in, I mean, it's a very, it's, right now, it's, the majority is in Four and Nine, but it'd be really nice to have all the schools in at least just the two districts. I don't think there's no, there's no way that we can put that huge school district in one district. I will tell you that I do live in Sun City, even though I don't look like I'm old enough to live there. But I will tell you that in talking with people in my community, that they do not want to be together with Sun City West. They are, there are distinct differences between the two communities, even though they are retirement communities. Sun City West does a lot of their shopping and things in Surprise, same with Sun City Grand and Sun City Festival. That's that river separation, those people are pretty much a community of interest. While Sun City, the original Sun City, they do a lot of their shopping in the Peoria area. So I'd like you to take that into consideration. Also, as it's been said earlier, Sun City and Sun City West, they do have separate fire districts and utilities systems. Let me see, what else, really quick. The HOAs are different as well. As was said earlier, the Sun City West Rec Board operates under Title 33, while the Sun City operates under Title 10. So it would be nice to keep all of Sun City together, as we have had in the last 10 years. That is the preference of the people that live in Sun City. And again, I think that we do have a good balance. It would be nice, again, to bring in Westbrook Village and bring in a little, I mean, we do have to bring in more people. And I think that's all. I just want to put on record, too, that Representative Rick Gray and Debbie Lesko are, they would agree with this as well. So thank you very much for your time. I know you guys have had a very long day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker.[1211.65][1211.65][applause] I think, does that sound at all? From Sun City West? Can you read that? See if I'm misreading it?
Willard R.
I thought it was Hanson.
President of Port. Not here.
Okay, from Sun City West? Okay. The next speaker is Anita Christie, representing Gilbert. Oh, is, are you Mr. Hanson?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I admire you for being able to stay awake. My name is Anita Christie. It's A-N-I-T-A-C-H-R-I-S-T-Y. And I live in Gilbert, but I couldn't make it to the Mesa or Phoenix meetings, so I've traveled halfway to California to be here with all of you wonderful people. And I'd like to just restate the obvious, I hope I don't put you to sleep. Here are portions of Article Four, Part Two, Section One of the Arizona Constitution, which directs the IRC on how to map congressional and legislative districts, which appears, and the following appears to be in order of priority. A, districts shall comply with the U.S. Constitution and the United States Voting Rights Act. B, congressional districts shall have equal population to the extent practicable, and state legislative districts shall have equal population to the extent practicable. C, districts shall be geographically compact and contiguous to the extent practicable. D, district boundaries shall respect communities of interest to the extent practicable. E, to the extent practicable district lines shall use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries and undivided census tracts. F, to the extent practicable, competitive districts should be favored, where to do so would create no significant detriment to the other goals. I know you don't have any wiggle room on letter A, the Voting Rights Act, and B, relating to equal population within the districts. However, C, D, and E, relating to compact contiguous boundaries, communities of interest, and using visible geographic features in retaining the integrity of town and county boundaries, are very important to the residents within those communities. They take priority over the last criterion, F, relating to competitive districts. When you consider Gilbert, or any community for that matter, please consider and respect the people within those communities, and don't draw lines that resemble a malaria germ in order to divide an area into political units to give special advantages to one group over another. If the IRC honors the criteria set forth in the Arizona Constitution, all should be well. But if you ignore those criteria and lead toward one of them to the detriment of the others, that's not the intent of Prop 106, and violates the Arizona Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.[1452.45][1452.45][applause] Our next speaker is Walt Gray, and he will be followed by Glenn Jacque, if I've got that right, Angel Katva, and Francine Dobkin. Walt Gray, representing Self from Maricopa. Thank you.
Right, Walt, W-A-L-T, Gray, G-R-A-Y. I've lived in Maryvale, West Phoenix, for over 30 years, and I think a community of interest, the basic building block for a community of interest, I believe, should be a school district. I think that that provides the diversity and the public participation that's necessary for a good government. And I think that it's good to kind of think of this, not only for the legislative boundaries and the congressional boundaries, but also for the city council boundaries, although I know that's not your job. But the more that we can create a silo, so that people have the same representatives at all levels of government, it'll make those levels of government work together better, and they'll know better who represents them. Now, the boundaries are all mixed up, that it's very difficult for people to know who really represents them. So I think, as far as West Phoenix is concerned, Maryvale, I think the Pendergast, the Cartwright, and the Isaac School District should all be in one legislative district, and shed off those parts east of I-17, up in Glendale, or not Glendale, but east of I-17, or even to the west into Avondale. And keep us, because we're a natural community, and we'd like to stay that way, in my belief. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Glenn Jacque, you can correct me, from Arizona Competitive District Coalition.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Glenn, G-L-E-N-N, Jacques, J-A-C-Q-U-E-S. I am the winner of the Arizona Competitive District Coalition for the Best Congressional and Best State Legislative Map. Ken Clark has forwarded the maps onto your commission for you to take a look at. You'll notice in my maps that for the congressional, I have four out of the nine are competitive, and for the state legislature, I was able to come up with seven out of the 30 districts as being competitive. I spent quite a bit of time working on these maps, and I certainly appreciate all the things that the, all the challenges that this commission is going to face. I really believe that competitive districts are a way to give the voters a voice. I believe it's the way to attract quality candidates from both political parties to run. It's a way to give the voters a real voice. It's also the way for, once a candidate is elected, for them to be accountable to the voters and know that they're going to face a real reelection. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.[1668.85][1668.85][applause] Our next speaker is Angel Katva, if that's right, representing Self from Avondale.
Actually, that's Angela Cotera, A-N-G-E-L-A-C-O-T-E-R-A. Yes, I flunked penmanship.
And I flunked reading.
That's okay. Let me begin by thanking the commissioners, and particularly Chair Mathis, for your voluntary service as members of this very difficult, but absolutely vital commission. I hope you all know how much you are appreciated. Yeah, let's hear it for the commission, guys.[1707.85][1707.85][applause] I have been a resident and Arizonan for 44 years, and I've lived out in Avondale for 20 years. I am one of tens of thousands of West Valley residents who have had no voice in the Arizona Legislature for over 20 years, because we live in single-party dominant districts. In fact, because of the demographics of my legislative district, in 2006, we did not even have a choice in the general election. There were three candidates for three legislative seats from one party. Because I truly believe that democracy demands that voters at least have a choice, I ran for the legislature. And when I went out and talked with voters in my district who shared my priorities from all parties, they routinely told me how isolated and how voiceless they felt in the community. Often, they admitted they had stopped voting altogether, they had stopped contacting the legislators, because their voice didn't matter and their vote did not matter in their district. Certainly, the foundation of a representative democracy is that all citizens have a right to have their voice heard through their elected officials, at least from time to time. Furthermore, our elected officials must be accountable to a majority of their constituents. Without competitive districts, however, elections result in officials who can ignore the voice of any constituent who cannot or does not participate in the primary election without consequences. For example, based on my district, my current representatives, they only have to be responsible for about 15% of registered voters. When 15% of registered voters are able to set the agenda for an When fifteen percent of registered voters are able to set the agenda for an entire district or for an entire state, we no longer have a true democracy. Fortunately, this year, the citizens of Arizona have you. You have an historic opportunity to turn Arizona into a robust representative democracy. Every vote must matter. In order for this to happen, elections must be decided in the general election. This only occurs when districts are competitive. So I'm here tonight to ask you to help restore my voice and the voice of hundreds of thousands of Arizonans who have been effectively disenfranchised for decades. Please make the creation of competitive districts your number-one discretionary priority. Help Arizona take the first and most important step towards being a true reflection of all of her citizens, and the silent majority will be silenced no more. Thank you for your service again, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. I've been told Francine Dobkin departed. So our next three speakers are Joyce Clark, Harry Garrawal, and Rosie Lopez, okay? That we might have, Harry may have left too, but we'll. So Joyce Clark, council member, representing Self from Glendale.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Commissioner and Commission Members. Thank you for coming to Glendale. We appreciate it, and the thanks is on behalf of our mayor and our entire council, most of whom are on vacation right now. Did you know, or if you didn't know, you should know, that Glendale is the fifth-largest city in the state of Arizona? It's got a population of approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand people. Before I go any further, I have to spell my name. J-O-Y-C-E-C-L-A-R-K. Glendale, unfortunately, is part of six different legislative districts. Now, to put that in context, Tucson, the second-largest city in the state, has five districts. Mesa, the fourth-largest city in the state, has four districts. Phoenix, the largest city in the state, has eleven districts. So how come Glendale has six legislative districts? Well, they plucked a little part of Glendale and put it in one legislative district, another little part of Glendale and put it in a different, and we ended up being in six legislative districts, which virtually guarantees us no voice in any of those districts, because the city is so diluted by being part of six different districts. So I guess what I'm saying is Glendale is a community of interest. We're not asking for much, but could you reduce the number of legislative districts that are in Glendale? If you could get it down to three or four, we would be ever so grateful. Now, as a last parting comment, usually I'm on that side, not on this side. This is like a very difficult zoning case, where you have to sit up there and listen to people say the same thing over and over and over again. And all I want to say is, I want to thank you for what you're doing. You came to this voluntarily. You come to it with principles, ideals, mandates, and no matter what you decide, you're going to be damned if you do and damned if you don't. It's just one of those things. But I know that you will have given it your very best effort, that you will have lived up to whatever principles and guidelines you believe in, and you will be doing the very best that you can for the citizens of the state of Arizona. And for that, I am grateful and very thankful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harry Garrawal here? Okay. Rosie Lopez is founder Arizona Hispanic Community Forum from Phoenix, and I'll go ahead and read the next few names. Jay Woodfin Thomas, Manny Martinez, and Marion Barry.
Rosie Lopez, R-O-S-I-E-L-O-P-E-Z. I'm here in support of the Minority Coalition map. I think they did a very good job, and they worked very hard in accomplishing this task. I want to thank you again. I was with you at, in South, at South Mountain. I'm in LD-16. I live right by the South Mountain. Beautiful place, beautiful boundary. And I spoke on behalf of District 16, the District 16 map that Leah Landrum, our senator, presented at that time. But I'm also here today to speak about Congressional District Four. I believe that we should keep those, those districts together, the District 16, 13, 14, and also Tolleson and Glendale. My husband lived in the Glendale area. We have a lot of friends here. We have done, come to a lot of events here. We share the same commonalities. We have the same communities, we are communities of interest. And also Tolleson's the same thing. He had relatives there, and we were very close to a lot of people there. I still have a lot of friends there. He does too. He has family there as well. So, and I used to live, we used to live in District 13 and 14, which was twenty-two at one time. It was all-in-one, and then they split them up to thirteen and fourteen. Eventually, we ended up in fourteen, but then we moved to District 16. So I am very well familiar with all of the areas, with Isaac District, all the, the school districts, Roosevelt, Isaac, Cartwright, all of those districts that are, that have a lot in common. We have the same transportation needs. We have the needs in our school districts. I'm a retired educator as well, and I worked at, in Phoenix Elementary District and at Murphy District, which is also part of that, I believe it's thirteen, District 13. But anyway, we have a lot of commonalities, as I said. Our churches, places of worship, we're Spanish-speaking and English-speaking. We're bilingual, many of us. And so I urge you to, and recommend to you the map that the Minority Coalition put together. And again, also, the Legislative District Four, that includes Tolleson, Glendale, and District 13, 14, and 16. Thank you very much, and thank you so much for all the work that you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to be sensitive to our court reporter. It's eight oh two PM. You're okay with, in our people up here, the dais? You, you all good? Okay. We'll keep rolling through then. Jay Woodfin Thomas, representing Self from Maricopa Litchfield Park.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you for saying my name, Ray. You're one of the few. It's J., period, W-O-O-D-F-I-N-T-H-O-M-A-S. I'm also known as Woody Thomas, and the former mayor of Litchfield Park. And I live in LD-12. And something I, I do believe, and I've heard a lot tonight about how we want to maintain a district, I was in District 15 when I moved here, and now I'm in District 12. I don't think there's any special thing of what was in the past. And I'd use LD-12 as an example. Very extreme activity in one party, as you heard Angela Cotera speak of clearly about. And I find that this is really quite a challenge, because when the last districting commission got together, there was a concept under, I believe, the Voter Rights Act, according to Representative Miranda, that it has to do with voter performance. Voter performance is pathetic, in my estimation. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, this mandate that some people believe they have or whatever. In this last election, in two thousand and ten, fifty-five percent of the population turned out to vote. That may seem to be a significant amount. Unfortunately, only fifty-nine percent of Arizona residents are registered to vote. So that means that thirty-two-point-four percent of eligible voters actually showed up at the polls. I don't believe that's your challenge in order to get more people to vote. And I'll give you an example. In my district, I voted in a gated community where I had to go through a gatehouse. I voted in a country club that had member-only signs out front. This, it did not bother me, but I can only imagine how offensive that was to a large group of people. And I think that, again, that needs to be considered in how you address our Legislature, not how you address the prospect of legislative districts. Need for competition is huge. In this idea that voter performance comes in, I believe Legislative District 13 was overloaded with a minority group because of their lack of voting. That then in turn meant my district was then predominantly one party. That has since leveled out, and we're about one-third, one-third, and one-third. But that's only been in the last election. I've been on the Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission for my agency in the past, and I believe very strongly that we should give people an equal opportunity that does not make any guarantees. And if people don't vote, I don't know what to tell you. I think it's a Russian adage, "You get the government you deserve." When I look at Congressional District Two, I think that meets the definition of gerrymandering. If you look at Litchfield Park and try to compare that with the Hopi Nation, I can't imagine anybody thinking that that would have any common, an interest, common interest or competitiveness between the two of us. That the fact that they don't like the Navajo, or the Navajo don't like the Hopi, I don't know who or which, and I've done appraisal work up in that part of the world, that that's not for the redistricting committee. Their common interest is, I would think, a lot greater than what it is with Litchfield Park. And when I look at Litchfield Park being associated with Kingman, Lake Havasu, and other riverside communities, I would think Yuma would be a lot more competitive, or a lot more interested in their thoughts than what we have in Litchfield Park. And again, thank you for your time, and again, being on that side of the dais, I do know the difficulties, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Manny Martinez, council member from Glendale.
Good evening. Manny Martinez, M-A-N-N-Y, M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z. Although Council Member Clark already did it, I want to welcome you to the city of Glendale on speaking for myself this evening. But I do want to tell you that, you know, we're very proud of the city of Glendale. It's a multicultural community, and, you know, it's a great place to live, to work, and to play. And I'm really glad to see the great turnout that you have this, this evening, and getting this input from not only our citizens, but from the, from the West Valley. And I want to thank you for, I'm sure, a thankless job. I've been following what's, you know, some of the comments being made, and some of the meetings have been had, and so you have a very, very important job, but a, you know, a thankless one, and I do really appreciate that. The, although I'm here representing myself, the council very early on did come to consensus that, as Councilman Clark said, we've, we have too many districts. You know, six that we would like to get to reduce. I'm not here to tell you what the magic number is, but I think that, that is something that I hope that you would strongly consider, because I think our, you know, our citizens, their strength is really diluted, and that they would be, I think, their voices will be heard a lot better if we have, you know, four districts. Again, thank you for, for being here and having this meeting here this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marion Barry, and then I'll go ahead and read the next three. Vince Anselmo, Deanna Stropes, and Jay Humphrey. Marion Barry, representing Self, and you can tell us where you're from.
Okay. My name is spelled M-A-R-I-A-N, and the last name is B-A-R-R-Y. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm from a small town, Tonopah. We have about five thousand people living out there. When I moved out there in two thousand and three, there were about twenty-five hundred people living there. Someone had the brilliant idea to take the I-10 and make that the dividing line for the small town, which happens to be home to the Saddle Mountain Unified School District Number Ninety, which is the largest school district in the state of Arizona. They drew this line right across from the I-10. North of the I-10, you're, I forget what the district number is now when I'm in. I think it's two. South of the I-10, your congressman happens to be down in Sierra Vista. Now, whatever happens, how can we possibly build a town that is divided in half where their congressman comes from a hundred and fifty miles away and doesn't care anything about those twenty-five hundred people or so in his district? As a small town, we have a great fire department that we've built. We're unincorporated, and yet we have one of the best fire departments in, in Kentucky. We have great schools. They're building. We've got a sense of pride coming up in the community. And when it comes to events like the Fourth of July, our fireworks beat out Phoenix every time. And this is all done by fundraisers and just the town coming together. We are pleading with you tonight. Make Tonopah one town. We have a natural boundary line with Belmont Mountains to the north, the Hasiyampa to, to the east of us. A Harkaway Valley is to the west of us. We do our shopping right now mostly in Buckeye because of the economy. Tonopah was scheduled for a Walmart that was originally planned to open eighteen months after they opened the one in Buckeye. The economy took a downturn. The Fry's didn't open. The Walmart didn't open. So we still have to go in to, into Buckeye. But we want to grow. We want to be a community, and it's only going to happen if we have one district that services the entire town. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vince Anselmo, private citizen from Phoenix. Okay. We will move on to the next one. Deanna Stropes, representing Self from Sun City.
I'm Deanna Stropes. That's D-E-A-N-N-A-S-T-R-O-P-E-S. Until about two days ago, I knew next to nothing about redistricting. So if I get any facts wrong, I'm sure someone will correct me. I'm here to support the work of this commission based on my understanding of certain facts. In two thousand and ten, the voters of Arizona demanded and won an independent redistricting commission because they wanted fairness and representation for all Arizonans, not just a segment that's willing and able to game the system. The outcome of the first commission was not what the people voted for. According to the Arizona Competitive District Coalition, forty-six percent of all voters, almost one-point-five million people out of a total of just over three million, still have no say after the primary. It's taxation without representation. Until human beings are perfect, there can be no perfect commissions. As far as I can tell, this one has taken every reasonable precaution to meet the criteria for fair and effective redistricting. The criteria that I care about include independence, transparency, competitiveness, and a focus on building districts around communities of common interest. You seem committed to your mission of fair and balanced redistricting. Based on careful consideration, this new commission apparently chose a different mapping consultant, one that's actually willing to follow and provide documentation of best practices. Only time will tell, but I believe that this current commission is doing a commendable job in a very difficult political climate. You deserve our respect and our support, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. It's Jay Humphrey, and I'll read the next three. Jean Deal, Gil Fiddler, and Anne Heinz. So Jay Humphrey, representing Self, and you can tell us where you're from.
J, J-A-Y, Humphrey, H-U-M-P-H-R-E-Y. I know that you're going to be able to please everybody that asked a favor tonight, but I live in Tonopah, Arizona, and it's an unincorporated area of Maricopa County. And the big issue that we have out there is like she said before me, we are split right down I-10. So we're on the west, on the north and south side of I-10, and we're trying to build a community that where the people work together and have enjoyment together and do things together. We have the major event we have out there is the Fourth of July. That's the one event that everybody comes to. I think we had around two thousand people show up this year for our event. And so we would ask that you consider putting us to, at least in one district together so we can work together as a community. And so with that, thank you very much for staying so long, and we would appreciate your help.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Deal, from Sons of Liberty Rider. He might not be here. Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker, Gil Fidler, from LD22, and Gilbert.
I'm not representing LD22. I'm representing myself. I'm just from there. My name is Gil, G-I-L, Fidler, F-I-D-L-E-R. I just have a couple of short comments. The Democrats think they lost the last election because the unequal districts, but the Democrats are confusing results with opportunity. Could it be the voters didn't like their message? The Secretary of State's office reported on July 1st that the numbers of Democrats dropped 8,000 voters. They now are under 1 million voters for the first time since 2008. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Heinz, representing self, from Maricopa, and I'll go ahead and read the next few: Margaret Gallagher, Jeffrey Rich, Karen Mahon.
Ann A-N-N Heinz, H-E-I-N-S. I'd like to congratulate the commission. You have allowed all the talking heads to make their points, and meanwhile, the rest of the people with opinions have now left after two hours. Thank you very much, and you just did that in Tucson, so we appreciate your partisanship. I came a great distance after watching the hearing today. I would like to say that the software chosen by you should be publicized and be online. No more closed door, no more behind-scenes dealings. Number two, Commissioner Herrera stated that we are wasting the taxpayers' money, and it's a partisan that the Attorney General is investigating your illegality. Could this be because Commissioner Herrera refuses to be interviewed, or that he refuses to take the oath of office? And it could be due to the fact he's been accused of bid-ridding and vote-trading. Or is it the fact that the commission has destroyed their documents, or the state procurement office has called it illegal? That is not reason, and that is a waste of taxpayer money. I voted for Prop 106 because I actually happen to be an independent from Berkeley, California, and I was disgusted the way they retreated before. Now I come and see that you've chosen a mapping consultant who knows nothing about mapping and whose only experience is handling President Obama's campaign and working for the SEIU MoveOn.org and AFALCIO. How do you think one side would feel if the other side now has the Koch Brothers, John Birch Society, Sarah Palin, Russell Pierce? Stop it. I don't believe that it should be one way or the other way. Just be fair. Stop the corruption. I want to have you throw out Strategic Telemetry, start all over. There's got to be some Arizona company that is nonpartisan, that doesn't put, have to, he had to scrub his whole website of progressivism, and he's so ashamed of his own clients. It's scrubbed. There has to be one nonpartisan mapping company out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Gallagher, representing self, from Scottsdale.
Margaret Gallagher, M-A-R-G-A-R-E-T, Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-A-H-E-R. I want to thank you for your participation in this commission, which, as you know, was created by a voter proposition to ensure that our elected politicians did not control the process. You have no doubt noticed how many voter propositions are appearing on Arizona ballots lately, specifically intended to direct or limit our elected politicians' actions. Why do we have to circumvent our elected representatives with voter propositions? Because too many of our districts are not competitive and are controlled by the fringes of one party. Please keep competitive districts a priority in your considerations so that Arizonans may truly have representative government and no longer need to resort to propositions to try to achieve the representation that we deserve. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Rich, representing self, from Avondale.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Although I represent myself, I am also the chair of the Legislative District 12 Democrats. And in several recent meetings, this commission has heard public comments from lobbyists hired to represent a group called Fair Trust. These are two Phoenix attorneys, Michael Thomas Liberty Jr. and David Cantalme, and they have publicly stated their affiliation with Fair Trust. But what they've not publicly stated is who's behind Fair Trust. The Arizona Capital Times recently reported that Fair Trust is actually funded and organized by Republican Senator John Kyle and Arizona's Republican Congressional delegation. Once you know who is behind Fair Trust, it's clear they're on a cynical mission. The group appears to be distorting the public record with comments under the guise of promoting the Voting Rights Act. The comments are implicitly against competition, which we all know would preserve the status quo of the current Republican power structure in Arizona. Fair Trust has already testified in Nogales, Casa Grande, and South Tucson. If these lobbyists intend to keep addressing the commission on the public record, they should disclose who their group represents and disclose its donors also on the public record. Given that Arizona's voter registration is sliced roughly into thirds, more competition should lead to more representation, representative government, and that's exactly what Fair Trust does not want to happen. The group exists solely to protect the interests of our state's most powerful Republicans. I'd like to add to the public record that this so-called Fair Trust is not interested in fairness at all, but is attempting to hijack what is supposed to be a citizen-led process. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four more request-to-speak forms, just so you all know. Karen Mahon, precinct committee person, representing self, from Glendale, and then it'll be Dwight Amery, Larry Templeton, and William Crum.
Thank you. My name is Karen Mahon. It's K-A-R-E-N-M-A-H-O-N, and I'm from LD10. It is my concern that the voters of Arizona will not be fairly represented in the redistricting process. It has been reported that Strategic Telemetry, the mapping consultant chosen by this commission, has known political ties that are partisan in nature. Its past affiliations with the Democratic Party, the 2008 Democratic presidential election, and its involvement with recall efforts aimed at Republican officials in no way indicates that the consultants will provide redistricting maps that are based on impartial and nonpartisan decisions. I have little confidence that all voters will receive equal representation. I am pleased that our Attorney General, Tom Horn, has authorized his office to conduct an investigation into the reports and procedural practices of the commission, and I hope the outcome will benefit all voters in Arizona, Democrats, Republicans, and independents alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dwight Amery, representing self. You'll have to tell us where you're from.
Thank you. My name's Dwight Amery, D-W-I-G-H-T-A-M-E-R-Y. I live a couple miles south in West Phoenix. Thank you for sticking around. I thought, man, if they cut off at eight, I had a two-and-a-half-hour school board meeting before this, and it's like, great, now get down there, and I'm last in line. Everybody tonight has talked about protecting their communities and everything, yet Richard Miranda put up a map that cut Maryvale in half, right down Thomas Road. Two miles of Maryvale to one district, two miles of Maryvale to the other, and split it right down the middle. Thomas Road bisects Maryvale. And I am the president of Maryvale Revitalization, and I'm also chair of the Maryvale Village Planning Committee. It's as well-known of a community as Owatuki, or any of the other areas around, the village of Maryvale, and I would like to keep Maryvale as one entity. The people of Maryvale all work together, and the city did us so good, they split Maryvale three ways for the city council. So it's like, my office is within 200 yards of three different city council districts. So please legislatively keep Maryvale as one whole. It's very compact, as people talk about that. It's like four miles north to south and about eight miles east to west, and there's over 200,000 residents, but almost half of them are under 20. The other part on, and the young lady that was going to law school really covered the congressional district very well with trying to piece those massive land pieces together with Glendale, Maryvale, South Phoenix, all sticking together in CD4. But please, keep Maryvale as its own entity and its own district. Don't start slicing it all up, or if you cut it in half, as other people have talked, you're taking whoever's representing the area is representing a majority of somewhere else and where that sliver that was added on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Larry Templeton, representing self. You can tell us where you're from.
Hello. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Larry Templeton, L-A-R-R-Y-T-E-M-P-L-E-T-O-N, from Surprise. In 2004, I was one of the, probably, a large number of people that was moving into here, and I picked the area I wanted to live in. I wanted to live in Surprise. It's a nice area. I would like for you to consider community as a big thing whenever you're doing your redistricting, because that's what we choose when we decide to move and get there. We pick the community. So make sure you keep that as a priority. Now, second thing, I live in a retirement community. You haven't seen anybody hardly from the whole Northwest Valley. Most of the people up there don't drive that well and don't want to drive after dark, and I would like to request that you have a redistricting meeting in the Surprise area. You could service Sun City Festival, Sun City West, Sun City Grand. The people from Sun City that couldn't get here, you really need to have it so that everybody can have an input. And older people pay taxes, too, and so we want to give them a shot at getting it out and addressing meetings like this, because they need to be heard, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And my last request-to-speak form is William Crum, representing self, and you can tell us where you're from.
My name's William, W-I-L-L-I-M, Crum, C-R-U-M. I'm not from one of the major parties, I can tell you that, because they've had it their way for many years. I am a member of the Arizona Green Party. Though I do not expect you to go out and balance the field by saying only so many of the party can live here, I do want something a little bit more fair. I'm basically running as a candidate for CD2. And what we have out there is roughly 146 Democrats, 210,000 Republicans, and the other is just as big as the Democrats. And I can't read that. I can't tell whether or not they're independent or not. So what I would like to see, and I understand this has been suggested by somebody, is maybe our new district should be on the west side of the state, in which we can include more rural areas and go all the way down, down as far as you want to go, Yuma. And the reason being is because whoever's representing us now, whoever he may be, doesn't care of anybody in the rural area. So let's not let the new district be a rural area carrier, I mean, a congressman. I mean, the problem is, I mean, who listens? It's like not listing your kids. Who cares? Okay? And as an Arizona Green, which basically only have 5,000 members in this state, we know what we're going to get when we go in there and run for an office. But what I would like to see is the people around me saying, well, maybe if we balance it out between the two, the big two, maybe some of those people say, well, maybe my vote will count if I vote for this man. I mean, my first election on the ballot was basically about, they had 300 Greens in my area, and I got 3,600. So where'd the other 3,300 come? I'd like to see truly the district, nine, I believe it is, right, go to the west side and take care of the entire thing. Number two, I'd like to see the Hopis cut off my district. That's ridiculous. That's crazy. How could someone who represents the west side expect to represent the right as well, in which I do not see? Currently, we have over 526,000 voters in my district, one of the largest people districts in Arizona. I would like that down to about 400. And with that, I want you to know that as being the last speaker, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Crum, do you mind stating where you're from, what city or town?
What city I am is presently in right now. I'm in Phoenix, trying to move to Glendale.
All right. Thank you. Great. Well, unless there are other request-to-speak forms, we've gone through all of them. Let's see, the time is right now 8:31, and I want to thank everyone who's still here for your patience and listening to each other, because that's how we all progress, is to listen to one another, and it's impressive how many of you are still here, and how many of you all came out to testify tonight. We really appreciate that. And I'll open it up to my two fellow vice chairs, and Vice Chair Freeman, if you have any comments for folks. Catching you right when you're going to get a drink, sorry.
I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Glendale and the people of Glendale for hosting us. It's really an honor and a privilege to come out here and meet with you all and to serve on this commission. I think, you know, some would say that we commissioners represent all 6.5 million Arizonans, and in some sense, that's right, but we weren't really elected by anyone. None of you really probably know who I am. We were all appointed by, to fulfill a specific constitutional role, and that is, and that's the only promise I made when I was appointed, which was I swore to uphold the Constitution. Not the Constitution that, as I would like it to read, but as the Constitution actually reads. And that is to provide the people of this state with an independent, a fair, a politically-balanced redistricting, and to do it in a way that builds confidence in the public, in the process, and hopefully the result as well. And that's what I think we're all trying to do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herrera?
Well, thank you. Thank you all for staying here. It is late, and it's, and I've said this before, this is my favorite part of the meetings. I do enjoy hearing from people from all sides of the political aisle. You know, one of the things for me, I've been volunteering for campaigns probably since college, and both Democratic and Republican, and the reason I volunteered is because I really felt that for each of the campaigns that I volunteered for, that they had a chance of winning, because I felt that, you know, I'm not wasting my time, that the candidate that I chose to support had a chance to winning in that district, and that's based on competition, and I feel that competition is important. It is not a subordinate goal. The Supreme Court here in Arizona upheld that, that that particular goal is just as important as the other ones. So I encourage for those of you who support competition to invite your friends to come to these meetings and state your opinion about, you know, what is important to you, and especially if competition is important to you. I welcome your comments, because I think if, you know, without competition, you know, I think people said better than I did, that there's not a voice. You know, we have competition in sports and business, and we should have competition in politics. So again, I thank you for coming, and I hopefully will see some of you in Sierra Vista, if not in Phoenix on Friday. Thanks again.
Thank you. Yes, we have another hearing tomorrow evening in Sierra Vista, and Saturday, I know, in Tucson. So hopefully, if you're interested, you can tune in via the web streaming ability and watch us if you're curious to hear what those folks are saying. So the time now is 8:34 PM, and this meeting or hearing is adjourned.